Please proceed.
Good afternoon, Council President Clark and members of City Council. My name is David Perry, Commissioner of the Department of Licenses and Inspections. Joining me today are Kurt McLaren, Administrative Services Director, and Rebecca Swanson, our Director of Research and Analysis. I am pleased to provide testimony on the Department of Licenses and Inspections fiscal year 2017 operating budget. The Department of Licenses and Inspections is committed to making Philadelphia the nation's leader in building safety. LNI enforces Philadelphia's construction, property maintenance, and fire codes which set forth the legal responsibilities that come with property ownership and participation in the construction process. Our mission is to promote public safety first and foremost across all of our core functions, which include issuing licenses and permits, inspecting construction projects to ensure compliance to all plans and applicable codes, enforcing the property maintenance code, fire code, and designated business regulations, and rapidly responding to building and construction emergencies. In fiscal year 2017, LNI will enter the second year of an implementation plan designed to strengthen the department as we sharpen our focus on public safety. LNI will reorganize to establish a division of building safety devoted to construction and demolitions, and we will hire an additional 24 building inspectors who will strengthen the department's enforcement of construction codes from the plan review stage through final inspection. Another 35 building inspectors hired in fiscal years 15 and 16 are in the final stages of training to obtain required certifications. Together, these new inspectors will begin to move the department closer to optimal staffing levels. To house the growing staff of building inspectors, the department will establish two new district offices in fiscal year 17. Specific locations of the new offices have not yet -- have yet to be finalized, but we -- but will be determined based on where the greatest amount of new construction and development, as measured by volumes of permits issued, is taking place. In total, LNI's budget request provides for 37 new positions, which in addition to the new building inspectors, includes staff to enforce business regulations and inspect existing buildings for code compliance. LNI operations will be further strengthened by 10 new positions within the Law Department and the Office of Innovation and Technology. The fiscal year 17 budget includes nearly $9 million for demolition. Three years ago, the city had over 600 imminently dangerous properties. Today, we have cut that number to 264 structures by aggressively demolishing buildings that pose a public safety threat, while also contending with the reality that Philadelphia's aging building stock continues to deteriorate. We are on track to demolish more than 500 properties by the end of this year, which we believe will allow us to meet our goal of decreasing the number of imminently dangerous properties to fewer than 250. We are also on track to end this fiscal year having performed 2,100 clean and seal of vacant properties. In fiscal year 15, LNI demolished 495 buildings and performed 2,175 clean and seals. In fiscal year 17, the department will implement technology improvements that will result in more efficient and effective operations, both internally and for the public. Project Eclipse, a capital-funded data system within OIT, will improve the department's ability to store, retrieve, and review data, and will prove particularly useful for inspectors in the field who will be able to pull up building information in real time. Inspectors will also be able to upload information into the system from outside the office, including timestamped photos and geocoded information that is critical in code enforcement proceedings. Other benefits of Eclipse include a new online system for obtaining or renewing permits and licenses, and better access to tax compliance data, which could in turn result in improved revenue collection for the city. Since the implementation of Eclipse in January 2015, an electronic interface with the Revenue Department has been established to more efficiently flag license applicants with delinquent taxes. To date, a total of $6,651,568 has been collected in delinquent taxes as a result, including $1,258,932 collected since January 2016. LNI is also partnering with OIT on an innovative initiative that is incorporating sophisticated aerial and street-level imagery, mapping, data mining, and computer modeling to help identify potentially vacant properties and prioritize inspections and demolitions of dangerous buildings. This technology is particularly important because it captures data not observable from the street level and allows the department to predict vacancy and prioritize enforcement of properties most at risk to the public's safety. Relatedly, the department is also investing in structural engineering services to obtain third-party expert analysis of the inventory of unsafe and imminently dangerous buildings. The hard-working employees in LNI are committed to their focus on public safety, and I commend them for their daily efforts. Thank you for the opportunity to present our fiscal year 17 budget. I'm available to answer questions at this time.
Thank you, Commissioner. And I want to say you're doing a good job in your new position. Carried it over from streets, so I want to thank you.
Thank you.
I've got a couple of quick ones, and then I may have to come back, because I think I'm going to have to run out of room for a second. Let me ask you a couple of basic questions, kind of walk down the street, talk to the residents, kind of questions. In our district, you know, we've had a significant number of demolitions, and unfortunately, years pass. I'm not sure about the treatment of the sidewall, whether it was sufficient, and I think at one point in time, there was like no treatment of the sidewall below the dirt line, so obviously when water seeps into the ground, it subsequently runs into the person's property, but I understand that was changed at some time. What is the timeframe on a resident being able to contact the agency when they believe they have insufficient sidewall treatment as a result of a demolition?
Any requests we get for sidewall treatments, we will respond to immediately and make an evaluation. If the contractor hasn't done the job properly, we'll get them back out there to complete the work that is necessary to make that wall watertight.
How far back does that go, in terms of the contractor's responsibility?
I believe it's two years. The contractor is responsible for the integrity of that wall for two years.
Only two years?
Yes.
Is there a particular reason why that timeline, or that's from a code perspective? Because unfortunately, you know, we seem to run into people who say, "Well, this was done like four or five years ago, and now I'm getting water in my basement." Is the two-year threshold for a particular reason?
No, I'll look into why that timeframe was established. It probably has to do with the cost of ensuring that that work is going to -- that there's integrity to that work, but we'll look into it and get back to it.
Yeah, that'll be helpful. Trust me, I get so many of those inquiries, and it's just, you know, it's unfortunate, and you don't know what to tell the person, and you know, dealing with a water in the basement is a significant issue.
Understood.
I want to ask you a question about -- so you'll get back to me on that, right?
Yes.
I want to ask you a question about an issue that I've been challenged, that I've been having for forever, and again, I represent one of those districts that there's been a lot of demolitions, and unfortunately, when you knock the house down, you got the vacant lot, and you'll see soon, a bunch of rain, last two days, and sun's out now. I guarantee you, by the end of the week, there's going to be weeds growing up on those lots. So I've had this issue with respect to the ability to require an abatement of cleaning of weeds or cutting of weeds on these vacant lots treatment, and there's been different issues as it relates to, one, the CVN, two, the required time. From my perspective, and I've talked about the fact that if you -- if it snows, and within six hours, and I might be off on the time, you're required to have a 30 foot -- or 30 inches, I'm sorry, 30-inch footpath on your sidewall. Am I correct?
About 36, actually.
36, okay. Like, six hours, you got to get that done.
Correct.
If you put your trash out on the wrong day, you're going to get banged with one of those trash tickets, right?
Correct.
Or if you don't do recycling, so the rules are clearly established. So what I don't understand, if you say that if you have a vacant lot, and the weed should be no taller than 24 inches or whatever, there's a specific thing, why do we have to wait 30, 60, 90 days before we can issue a lien or some sort of corrective action on that, on that particular property, as opposed to all the other instances we're immediate to take -- we're immediately ready to take remediation actions on that particular issue?
Well, with any violation, we have to notify the property owner that the property is in violation and give them an opportunity to abate the problem themselves. That's why there's a delay from when the problem is initially reported to us until such time as we can then get into an abatement mode and do it ourselves and lien the property. I mean, ideally, we want property owners to step up and be responsible and mow the property, take care of the weeds, keep it clean. It costs the city money when we have to get in there and do it for them and lien the property, which we're not guaranteed that we're ever going to collect that money back.
So why are we not required to give notice to a person that puts trash out on the wrong day, or the person who does not clean the sidewall, or a person that doesn't do the things with recycling, all those issues that I referenced earlier, where there's an immediate issuance of a violation and a fine? Why some things that we can do immediately based on a set of guidelines or standards or requirements, but others, like the cleaning of vacant lots? If you know the vacant lots must be -- they cannot have weeds beyond 24 inches, and again, I'm not sure if that's it, then why can't we issue an immediate violation, i.e. fine, on that property?
There's two types.
What's the difference? Yeah, I guess I need to know, why do you not get notice to clean your sidewall? You get banged immediately, or why do you get notice, "Don't put that trash out again"? You get a ticket like day one.
Yeah, there's two different enforcement mechanisms. One is issuance of a CVN, which is a code violation notice or ticket. Basically, the person that pays that ticket is admitting to guilt and making any further action against that property go away. So they're admitting that there was a problem, and if they don't choose to challenge it, they simply paid a ticket, and that's the end of that enforcement action. There's also notices of violation that we issue when we need to go in there and do the abatement action. So it centers around the legal process. We can't -- if we don't provide legal notice and we go in and abate the problem, then we have no way to recover the cost for doing the abatement. So since the city doesn't go in.
I'm not even saying the abatement. Why can't you give a fine to a person from day one if they don't clean their sidewall?
Why can't?
You don't have to wait, you give them a fine.
Well, it's actually a -- it's a code violation notice. It's a ticket that is -- can also be challenged.
Okay, that's fine, but I'm saying the responsibility is for the person to challenge. I just don't understand, if I can give you a ticket for not moving your snow immediately, why can't I give you a ticket for not complying, for being in noncompliance of the code with respect to how you're maintaining your vacant lot?
Because what basically happens is that the case goes away at that point. If we just issue a ticket, we're not going to abate it, we're not going to do anything. We just put a ticket against the property. Whereas if there's high weeds on the property or debris, we need to spend our own resources to go out there and clean that up. So we want to be in a legal position where we can recover our cost for doing the abatement action. That's what the difference is. We could issue a ticket, but then we're not going to do the abatement. If you want to do the abatement, you have to issue the code violation notice and not a ticket.
Okay. So that's the first time anybody has ever explained it to me like that. It was always, "We can't do it." So the issue is if we anticipate that somewhere we will have to abate it, then you need to position yourself to do that remediation based on the issuance of a CVN?
That's correct.
All right, okay. Councilman Heenan?
Just for my own clarity, and just by listening to the conversation, and I know the differences between a CVN and an NOV, and what I'm trying to figure out, just by this dialogue, is NOVs, are they because they are on real property or a person's property as opposed to the right-of-way when CVNs are issued for snow and for street, for trash? Is there an NOVs issued for high weeds, which, you know, whether it's a vacant lot or somebody's front yard? Is there a difference legally because of that?
No, that has nothing to do with where the problem is. The CVN process started maybe, I was aware of it maybe 12 years ago. It was a way of trying to get compliance for simple issues that.
Change of behavior.
Try to change the behavior, that's correct. As opposed to trying to set us up legally to do an abatement and then collect the cost for our services.
Just to say point of order. When you want to jump, want to jump. Hold on. Councilman, you done?
That is, I would just, you know, my question, I mean, you answered whether, you know, NOVs are issued, and I think only LNI, you only issue as LNI, you only issue NOVs, is that correct? For the most part, in large, largely.
For the most part, it's NOVs.
It is, okay. So my question was, you know, is it NOVs issued because it's on somebody's personal property as opposed to in the right-of-way where CVNs are issued? That was my point of clarity.
Where there's a public easement versus a vacant lot where there's not.
I didn't know if there was a legal reason why you would issue somebody, give them the opportunity for remediation as opposed to, you know, snow and trash.
Yeah, I mean, the other difference is that, I mean, Streets Department issues mainly CVNs as opposed to NOVs, because they don't have access to the court system like LNI does. If we wanted to get a person in court and try to get higher fines imposed for a particular violation, we have to do that through the NOV process. Whereas Streets Department, it's very efficient for them to issue CVNs and move on. They simply don't have access to the court system like LNI does.
Right. Hey, say point of order.
Point of order.
Chair recognizes Councilman Tobin-Burgh.
Thank you, Council President. And to follow up with what the Council President had said, why can't you do both? Because let me be very direct about this. When you cut down weeds in someone's house, obviously, if your department comes out and clip, there's a big bill with that, but what you're actually trying to do, if it would work, is to get to the actual property owner, say, "You know what? This is not good. I don't want to get these people all riled up. Let me cut this myself." I mean, my point is, it could be quicker. I think the department and we as council ought to take a look at this, because when you have a lot that is overgrown, that can also be overgrown on the public footway. It could be, and it can grow and be disruptive for a lot of reasons, but also, if you let the homeowner or the property owner know early, "Hey, this is a serious issue, you better clean it up," you might actually get compliance by the person themselves. You might not, and clip may eventually have to go in and do all the other things and then put a lien on the property, which I believe at some point, the city will get paid, even though it might take years and years and years. I mean, but I think eventually, you get your money. I would be interested in exploring possible legislation to do both. You know, if a weed or someone's lawn is two to three feet high, well, they're not maintaining it properly, and there ought to be an immediate response from the city to clean this up. More things could happen, but right now, it's, I don't know, if you don't shovel your snow, what is it, a $30 fine or $50? I don't know what it is exactly. But the fact of the matter is, you could start the process with that, get their attention, nothing comes, then continue the other way. I mean, I think it's something we should explore, because Council President then -- well, he disappeared on me. But my point to my colleagues is, you could get more immediate compliance rather than taking months and months and months. That's my point. Thank you.
Understood. That's a discussion we'll have to have with the Law Department to make sure that we're not issuing two different orders on one particular case. If the person pays the ticket, then the violation goes away. It's a negotiated guilty plea.
I'd like to be involved in a little bit of a discussion and possibly explore possible legislation to remedy that, because I think many property owners would move quickly on it. Not all, probably not even most, but many would, and you'd have immediate compliance.
Thank you, Councilman. Chair recognizes Councilman Greenley.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good afternoon, everybody. I have a couple of questions, business compliance-wise. Commissioner, I know we've talked about this before. The idea is to try to do most of, like renewal of licenses or applying for licenses and permits online? Is that where you're kind of going?
Correct. Yes, we just rolled out Phase 1B of the Eclipse project, which allows for 40 different licenses to be applied for or renewed online. So it's a major step forward that we just accomplished.
That makes sense, but I know there are particularly maybe some small business owners that still may not be computer savvy, particularly maybe folks that, you know, immigrant population that come over. They can still do paper applications or?
Yes, they can be served in the MSB concourse.
So they still have that?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, we're not shutting that down. We realize that segments, certain segments of the population don't have access to the internet or are not savvy enough to be able to do that type of process online, and we have to continue to offer in-person services.
And I might be stealing a question from Councilwoman Sanchez, but again, that immigrant population oftentimes has problems with the English language. Do you have people that can help them when it comes to that?
Yeah, we have, I believe it's eight different languages?
Yes.
We have employees that are bilingual in multiple languages. We also use the language line for translation. When needed, you call up a language service and put the person on speakerphone, and you can get a translation into multiple languages.
... of information, because I know we're all working on a language access plan, but, you know, when you say you have seven different languages, people need to understand that out of 417 people, only 14 people are bilingual. It's not a lot, and having one person is not enough, just for the record.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
I just have one more, please.
Proceed.
Thank you. As far as, I know we've gotten questions from folks that need the food licenses, that it seems to take a long time. Now, I may not have this right. I know your department has a part of this, and Health has a part. Could you explain, because is it Health inspects, and then you give the license, or vice versa?
Yeah, the Health Department does all the inspections and all the approvals associated with the issuance of the various food licenses that are out there. We essentially are the clerk of the works. We process them, we have the software, we have the ability to take the payments, but all the inspections, all the approvals are Health Department approvals.
Okay, so the delay some people complain about, that's on the Health Department?
Yeah, we'll blame the Health Department.
Okay, all right, that's fine. I'll tell them that when they come in. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Councilman. Chair recognizes Councilman Dom.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Commissioner, welcome back to LNI. I know when I was in the private sector, you were the guy we would always would call to get the right answers, so I'm glad you're heading LNI today. It's great, and I think they'll benefit from your leadership experience as well as your great judgment. I have a few questions. When I was reviewing the testimony, I didn't see any discussion of revenue projections or any breakdown of the various fees charged by LNI. How are these fees currently determined, and is there a projected income for the department included in the fee structure?
Our revenue projection for the coming fiscal year is approximately $58 million.
$58?
I'm sorry, it's $54 million. I stand corrected. The permit fees for various construction activities, they were actually put together maybe 10 years ago. Back prior to 10 years ago, we, the department, would charge a percentage of the constructed value of a building undergoing a renovation, and it would be about 2% of the construction value. That would become your permit fee. The department then would have major disputes with various builders over what the true value of the construction activity is. There were forms that were submitted that were not quite accurate, and contracts reviewed. So we got away from assessing permit fees based on estimated cost of construction and moved over to permit fees based on the area that's undergoing renovation or construction. So there's no dispute as to the area, the size of the building. Those things are easily measurable as opposed to debating over what the true value of construction is. So those fees were established about 10 years ago. The only problem with establishing fees that are based on square footage is that they're basically frozen in time in terms of they're not inflation indexed. So we are just starting to look at our permit fees again to see if they are in line with other permit fees in other jurisdictions, and whether it makes sense to raise permit fees to make sure that we have adequate funding for various activities.
Continuing that question, there was a court case, Rom versus Trediffen Township, that established the fact that fees charged by government entities for licenses and permits must be calculated on a general basis of recovering the full cost of the services provided by the municipality and administering the process of providing for, whether it was the plan examination or the field inspection of a building permit. Is there a way that you can come back to us and say to us, "Look, we're charging, we're not charging correctly. You need to come charge these amounts based on the actual cost"?
Yeah, we, like I said, we are in the process of doing a review of our permit fees, and we'd be happy to share our analysis with City Council.
Okay, great. Another question. In the past, it seems like there's been a lack of sufficiently skilled, prior to your term, sufficiently skilled inspectors, and a decrease in the existing inspectional staff by prior administrations. Have you given any thought to utilizing the provisions of the state's Uniform Construction Code that allows state-certified and regulated independent inspectional agencies to supplement their inspectional staffs to ensure thorough and timely inspections?
Yeah, we currently use third-party inspections for electrical inspections. We do have issues with hiring very technical, specific job titles. I think that there is room to use third-party for some of these very difficult to fund or to hire positions. For instance, Crane inspected a department, had done an enormous amount of outreach and effort to try to hire a Crane inspector to no avail. I think in, for that particular circumstance, it would make sense to use a third-party or to have an engineering firm under contract that can provide us with that expertise as needed. In general, I want to say that for things such as plan review, I believe our review staff is the best in the country, and I would love to utilize our own examiners to the maximum extent possible. I would only consider going beyond that if we were in dire straits or had a situation where we couldn't hire and the volume of work was so overwhelming that we needed a relief in order to meet our service-level agreements for issuing, the issuance of permits.
Do you have the ability now to go outside and hire third-parties to help you? Do you have that ability now?
Yes, we do.
Okay, good. One last question, and I'll come back. It seems like there's a lot of unpermitted construction activity and unlicensed business activity in the city today, especially in the residential housing market, which results in uninspected residential units and the loss of rental licensing fees for the city. What will be the department's plans for dealing with this specific vast underground commercial activity, as well as the surging underground economy, based on the proliferation? underground economy based on the proliferation of businesses operating as independent contractors?
Yeah, we need to put more inspectors out on the street to look for unpermitted construction activity. We need to get the message out to the public to report construction activity that doesn't have permits posted on premises. We are moving to put our trainees, co-locate them with our building inspectors, and one of the trainee's roles, because they're, if you're in the trainee category, you can't do a full performance building inspection, but they can be utilized to do inspections in areas and look for, and look for unpermitted construction activity.
Okay, thank you, and good luck with everything.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. I have a few questions. You know, Councilman Dom hit on quite a few things. You talk about our fees here, our permit fees. You know, as you look at best practices and where we are relative to other big cities and municipalities, you could obviously find out that we're kind of low at this point. And, you know, recapturing the underground economy where, you know, we just don't have enough inspectors, and there's a lot of work being performed out there. The penalty for being caught without a permit is what, double the permit fee?
That's correct.
All right, and, I mean, so, you know, we have, what's the penalty for no zoning?
I have to check to see if we double the zoning permit fee. The zoning permits are relatively minimal, but it's really in the construction permits that it's a significant penalty, so to speak, or reinspection fee. We have to classify those kinds of fees as reinspection fees as opposed to a fine or a penalty.
I think we should certainly take a look at our fees again and, you know, consider increasing them. But they're for the, they're for the good agents and actors that are out there. Instead of the underground economy that, you know, we've been hearing over the last several years, you know, double the permit fees and double the zoning fees, that's a catch-me-if-you-can. It's a part of doing business in the city of Philadelphia with no real consequence in changing behavior. So I know as you reform, and you have a tremendous amount of reform ahead of you, and we all, you know, are counting on you to, you know, because, you know, you are the true essence of first responders in public safety, I think, when it comes to building construction and building maintenance. So, you know, I hope you, you know, we could consider, you know, taking a look at what are other steps legally, or do we have to do something with the state on the Uniform Construction Code so we're not preempted with permit, double permit fees or zoning? There needs to be harsher consequences, you know. Of course, with a grievance process or an appeal process, but people can't get away with trying to build Philadelphia without, you know, licensed contractors, without being a, an employee, not a 1099, which is against the law, right? You need to be an employee on a, on a project and pulling permits. So I'm hoping we get there as we move forward. You talk about the amount of work that you had mentioned inspectors. Page three on your, in your testimony, you have budgeted for 384 positions and only filled 330. All right, so that's a little bit of concern. And do you know the ratio per property, real property and inspectors that we have?
No, I do not have that information off the top of my head, but we will be happy to provide that to you.
So how many inspectors do we have? You have building permits and property maintenance, is that correct?
Yeah, we have two basic divisions in the department.
Okay. In the building commercial, how many inspectors?
There's 71 building inspectors.
Seventy-one, and how many in the property maintenance division? About 80?
It's 55 on the operations side.
Fifty-five. Okay, so we have, what's that, 120, 126 inspectors out on the street? We have almost 600 properties in the city of Philadelphia, both commercial and residential, is that correct? 576, 78-ish?
Properties, yes.
And New York, in their two divisions, have roughly 2,300 inspectors, and they have just under a million real properties. So, and I had to point that out, it's not to critique at all. It's to say that you got a heck of a job in front of you, and it goes to your point that we need more inspectors, and it needs to be a priority, because I can't imagine the caseload that they have and the responsibility, especially over recent, in the recent years. So whatever we can do, however we can work together, however, you know, this administration or, you know, City Council can help get us to the staffing needs that's necessary, you know, we're going to fight hard for it.
All right, but we appreciate that.
The, what does, what is the cost for, to get imminent dangerous structures down to zero as soon as possible?
Well, we, we, this year, we will do about 500 demolitions from the general fund. To get them down to zero, we would probably, off the top of my head, we'd probably have to about double our demolition budget.
Double the demolition cost?
Yes.
And what is the demolition cost right now?
The demolition per property, it's about $17,000.
Okay.
All right, great. I am going to yield my time and come back in a second round. Chair recognizes Councilman Johnson.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. First and foremost, I want to thank Commissioner Perry for being here and congratulate you on your new position. I've had a great opportunity working with you and your former life as a Streets Commissioner, so I'm looking forward for you. I'm looking forward towards you doing great work under LNI in a new capacity. So I want to start off by just saying anyway, I can be supportive of those efforts. Don't hesitate to let me know just for the simple fact, I know that you have a great responsibility running LNI, but if it's any, if there's any evidence of how you will operate under LNI, the same way you have done in the Streets Department, I think we're in good hands. And so just wanted to start off by saying that. I want to kind of piggyback on, off what my colleague, Councilman Heenan, talked about in terms of the numbers of inspectors that you have out on the street. So you have 71 in what department?
That's in the building division.
That's building, and 55 in?
We call it the operations division.
Operations division. So how do you go about prioritizing and allocating your inspectors throughout the city of Philadelphia? And I'm going to give you the backdrop. There's a high level of development taking place in the Point Breeze, greatest part of my district. And we had a community meeting a couple months ago with the various RCOs, and the questions came up as to how LNI inspectors are distributed throughout neighborhoods where there's a significant amount of development taking place. And so we made a commitment to actually do our research and our due diligence so we can report back, because the neighbors just felt like we needed to have more inspectors coming out and keeping these developers that do not operate in the most professional manner in check, to be quite frank with you. And so we get complaints daily regarding how developers just come in, don't follow the laws, and left the people, the constituents who live in the neighborhood, at the whim of people who just want to come and develop. And so we don't want to demonize them, but nevertheless, they must operate in the most professional manner, following the law. And that's where LNI comes in place in terms of their check and balance, fighting on behalf of the residents, or at least advocating on their behalf when there is a problem. And so I wanted to get an idea of how do you go about distributing the inspectors as relates to development taking place throughout the city?
Yeah, our number-one priority is to fund and have a sufficient number of inspectors that are involved in our demolition program. So the contractual services unit, they handle doing all the inspections for all demolitions in the city of Philadelphia, whether they're Philadelphia, city of Philadelphia contracted work, or whether it's private work. Those demolitions, obviously the most dangerous construction activity that we have, our priority is to make sure that those projects are covered first. So beyond that, we have five district offices, and we try to balance the workload amongst those five offices. So in the areas of the city that have less construction, you'll notice that the size of that district becomes larger and larger, and we try to cut down the size of the district boundaries in the areas of heavy construction so that we can concentrate more inspectors in a smaller geographic area. Now, with the increase in inspectors that our budget allows, we're also going to be opening up two new district offices, and we will place those offices in areas that are having the highest demand.
Do you know where they're going to be located at the moment?
At the moment, we don't have those selected yet, sir.
So you'll have total of seven district offices moving forward?
That's correct.
Okay. And out of the 37 new employees that you will be hiring, they will be split up between the building and operational units? You would split those 37 new employees up between those two units?
Good afternoon, Councilman Kirk McLaren, Administrative Services Director. We performed an analysis in terms of the, as the Commissioner stated, the most busy parts of the city in terms of permit volumes over the last three fiscal years, and I can say Point Breeze was number one. In terms of how we split up the new inspectors, 24 of them will be in the building division as building inspectors. Eight will be in operations as code enforcement inspectors. So the vast majority of those 37 new will be inspecting construction projects.
And just, I want to clarify, the number-one area was the Point Breeze area?
It was. Point Breeze followed by Fishtown, Kensington, and West Philadelphia.
One of those new district offices probably would be great in the Point Breeze area of South Philadelphia, but I just wanted to just touch base because obviously, you know, we're on the ground. I see the development taking place. I live in Point Breeze. I get the phone calls because I'm the councilperson, so it may be a little easier to me to reach out to someone and say, "Hey, can you come out and follow up and make sure that this project is being done properly?" But obviously, we want to advocate for the district as a whole. And this is the second part, second question I just want to ask. I know the administration, meaning the mayor, talked about expanding CLIP, that great old program called CLIP. And I want to get an idea, moving forward, how CLIP will be expanded. I think I heard preliminary conversations that the budget will be increased. Will there only be a Northeast Philadelphia program? Will it expand throughout all parts of the city of Philadelphia, as the mayor talked about prior to him coming to the city, coming to office? I just want to get an idea where we're at in terms of really addressing the issue of blight and addressing the issue of lots that need to be abating, lots that need to be cleaned. And so just give me an idea where we're standing moving forward.
Yeah, CLIP operates independently of the Department of Licenses and Inspections. We do work very well and collaboratively with CLIP and with the Streets Department to do blight removal. But to specifically answer your question, I'm going to have to say that you'll need to speak to CLIP when they come before you.
Okay. And that's it. I will save my question for the next round, sir.
Thank you, Councilman. Follow-up on the Councilman's question with respects to the ability for community people to find out, to deal with some of the challenges associated with development. When Anne Fedoulin was here earlier today in testimony, one of the divisions, called the Developer Services Division within the planning and development newly formed entity, was supposed to be the entity that dealt with not only the developer side of the equation, but also the local neighborhood side. And the way it was envisioned, that there was going to be like a one-stop shop for developers, there's going to be a one-stop shop for the residents and the councilperson, so they wouldn't have to call to find out whose ditch it is, because, you know, it could be a utility ditch for water, it could be a gas company, it could be cable, it could be anything. And we didn't want to have the community people to have to deal with trying to figure out who was doing this activity in the street. So she's going to be reaching out to you, according to her testimony, to better coordinate, because I know a lot of the license issuance was going to be a part of that Developer Services, you're working out the kinks. But we hope that you also have a one-stop shop for the neighbors and the councilpeople, so they don't have to try to figure out who's developing, when is the streak going to get fixed, when is the sidewalk going to be open, all the things associated with development. So she's indicated she's going to be reaching out to you to see if they can better coordinate those type of responses.
That sounds like a great initiative, and we look forward to working with her on establishing that.
Thank you, sir. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Gimm.
Thank you very much, Council President, and I'd like to join my colleagues in welcoming you, Mr. Perry, to, you know, to LNI. I think your presence there is desperately needed. Huge amounts of work that's ahead, but your record has been really great, so we're really hopeful about stuff. Some of my questions, I want to reiterate Councilman Dom's interest in maybe rethinking and relooking at fees. If fees haven't changed in a decade, it seems like that's a really important area where it can help with LNI's budget and make sure that our fee structure matches the pace and rate of development that's happening in the city as well. I think that development has grown significantly, and it seems that the fee structure should reflect that. So thank you on that level. But some of my questions are going to focus primarily around rentals and making sure that properties, rental properties in particular, are not only just tax compliant, but address outstanding violations against them. And one of my questions is whether you currently condition the granting of rental licenses on the lack of major violations?
The, there was an ordinance passed last fall that would block the renewal of a housing license if there were violations on the particular property. What did not get programmed at that time was a way for that to be done through our new computer system. As we move towards electronic and online services, the checking of violations needs to be done automatically. It needs to be done electronically. That was, has not been programmed yet, but it is our intention to do that. And also on a go-forward basis, any new licenses that are applied for, for housing rentals, we will check for existing violations, because it's, that's a powerful way of getting a prospective landlord to abate any of the problems with their property. If they can't get a rental license because they have violations, then they have a motivation to fix whatever problems that they do have.
And I think in part it's because we, you know, we understand that there are lots of resource limitations and such, but LNI's role in ensuring basic standards of habitability for rental properties is just really important. And if there's a way for us to be able to work closely with LNI to be able to achieve that, that would be something that I'd be interested in. But is there a timeframe where you could expect some of these things to be put in place in terms of both, I think you mentioned that for moving ahead for any new licenses that are applied for, that you will double-check on major outstanding violations? Is that correct?
Yeah, I have to meet with our IT folks and work out the details of how we're going to accomplish that. Next year's renewal, which would be by the end of March in 2017, to the best of our ability, I hope to have that type of check to be programmed into the, into the computer system. ability, I hope to have that type of check to be programmed into the computer system. It'll be something that we want to have part of a routine license renewal.
And how do we ensure, or can you talk a little bit about what the work of LNI is to ensure that properties that actually have these unsafe violations on them are put into safe conditions? Like, is there a reinspection process, or how does that work when something is identified as being unsafe?
Yeah, the first thing we do is issue a notice of violation. Then we check back in a predetermined amount of time to see if the violation has been corrected. We'll then issue a second warning to the property owner. If they don't comply after a second reinspection, then the, in most cases, we'll start the court enforcement process.
So, in your testimony, you mentioned a plan to maybe obtain a third-party expert analysis of the inventory of unsafe and imminently dangerous buildings, and I think I was wondering if you can provide a little bit more detail about that particular aspect. I think that's more of what I was trying to understand a little bit better.
Yeah, what we need to do, and what we've started, is to have an on-call engineering firm to help us with structural evaluations of structurally unsafe buildings. One of the first task assignments that we gave the firm that we have is to come up with a connection detail for standalone row houses that, where, in a case where we demolish the houses on both sides of a row home, the structure that remains needs to be pinned together properly. It's something that's never been done, but we need to do that, because if we don't do it, we'll be coming back and doing that building, you know, in a matter of time. So those are the kinds of tasks that we're looking at, using outside engineering help to help us work through.
Do you know how many properties we're talking about?
No, I do not have a number of how many standalone properties there are.
Do you not have them just with you, or do you not have them in general? You would have access to them, or do we, we would know?
No, we have never coded those properties in a manner in which we can identify through a database which ones are standalones and which ones are part of a string.
But we have an inventory of the number of imminently dangerous buildings. We have a number on those. Is that accurate?
That's correct, we do.
And how many is that?
The number changes weekly. It's approximately two-hundred-and-forty at the moment.
Okay. And my, and my other question has to do with the identification of unlicensed rentals for possible enforcement, and what the strategies that LNI might have, or what capacity we have to analyze data. For example, you know, I think Councilwoman Kianya Sanchez has previously discussed looking at information from utilities like PGW and PICO where there might be multiple meters in place, but is there any type of approach or strategy to use and identify some of these unlicensed rentals? Or take a look at how to do enforcement with those?
Hi, Councilwoman. My name's Rebecca Sponson, I'm with the research and analysis with the department. We are building a large property inventory with OIT, and currently it is focused on vacant properties and identifying those, being proactive and predicting dangerous buildings. But as part of that, we are working with utility companies. We meet with the Water Department and PGW and PICO, and we are in the early stages of a data sharing agreement with them and figuring out how we actually make that work operationally. So we do think that that type of data, we're kind of doing field verifications of accuracy, so I think eventually, once we get it moving for vacant and dangerous buildings, bringing that data in is very possible.
And is there a timeline on that?
It really is kind of the technical part of it right now, of how we get the different departments to all talk to each other, so it's being worked on. We don't have an end date, but it is being very actively worked on.
And just last quick question is, do you work with OIT, or do you have to get an independent tech contract, some kind of an independent contract to handle that?
Oh, no, it's worked through OIT.
OIT, okay, thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Chair recognizes Councilman Tobenberger.
Mr. President, thank you. Commissioner Perry, thank you for your past service and your future service. I, for one, and I think my colleagues have expressed, I look forward to working with you. Your department works very hard, and a thirty-million-dollar budget, I respect your work. However, I want to ask you what the average waiting time is for businesses and homeowners, if you know it, when they call in for concerns? Do you have any sense of how long they wait for?
Well, I mean, for each of our different services, there would be a different response time. Are you talking about for issuance of permits, or for us to go out and inspect properties?
For almost anything. I mean, I can actually even tell you a horror story, just to give you a sense. It's not your fault, and it happened long, long ago. I, at the time, was Chief of Staff to City Councilman Jack Kelly when I was a district councilman. I was put on hold by someone from LNI, and I tried to identify myself, they wouldn't even allow that, and put me on hold. And I thought, "I'm looking out the window, and I'm looking at the office, I'm looking at the MSB building." So, "Son of a gun," and I was in better shape back then. I literally stayed on hold, but walked across the street, well, kind of ran, because I wanted to catch this guy. And I barged in the office, and he says, "Look, can't you see? I'm really, really busy." And he was, he says, you know, "I got people on the telephone." I said, "Well, you don't have to worry about that particular person, because that's me, and I'm here." My point is, it's something that is actually historic, it has happened for a long time. Do you think it's possible we could start tracking how long people are waiting? Because our taxpayers, whether they're business people or residential, pay a fairly decent amount of tax dollars to help run this department. And I truly believe that they deserve the best possible service we can, and that, of course, takes monitoring and measuring, you know, like a customer service kind of thing.
Yeah, we do have, we do have service-level agreements for different activities, including how long people wait in the concourse. In terms of customer service, I understand and I agree with you, we need to do a better job, we need to put more folks online to be able to take questions over the phone and be able to move the lines that are in MSB. As we become more computer-oriented and things can be done online, I would expect that the wait times in the concourse will improve. But we understand and we know, and we're striving to bring on additional folks that can still work with people that are waiting in line and that call in over the phone.
Well, thank you. With that also being said, I know business people who are lifeblood of this city in many ways, because they create jobs, particularly small business people, have become very frustrated, or can become very frustrated. And New York just recently passed a Business Bill of Rights, and I'm thinking Philadelphia might be a good candidate for this type of legislation. I know Mayor Kennedy has been thinking about it as well. I know it would have to be executed through your office, and I was wondering if this is something you could possibly support, where it actually would put some time limits and some other things, like, you know, this is your right as a business person in Philadelphia.
Yeah, I mean, it sounds like a very compelling idea. If we don't have the ability to hire folks to hit the targets that are given, all's we're going to be doing is frustrating ourselves, though. So, with that kind of commitment, there has to be a commitment to provide the services and provide the resources in order to meet those targets. I mean, an empty promise will do no one any good whatsoever.
Well, I would concur. I would concur with that. I know you had spoken in part of your testimony on some folks that you were looking to hire. I have in front of me a list of about, well, at least eight or maybe ten positions that were never hired last year. Now, I know that wasn't under your jurisdiction and your timing in the department, but do you have any sense of why they weren't hired?
Yeah, many of the technical positions, the salary levels are not high enough. We go and recruit, we just don't get an applicant pool that's willing to take the jobs at the salaries that are offered. And some folks, when you're looking to hire people that have several years of experience, generally you're looking at a situation where you're drawing folks that may need to move into the city, and that becomes, in some cases, an impediment to hire, to bring people on board. That's why we were talking earlier about using engineering contracts and third-party. We do, we strive, we really want to have folks that are city employees, that live in the city, that take their paycheck home and spend it in the neighborhood, but there are circumstances in which we simply cannot get the right folks to apply for the job, and the positions go vacant.
In fact, Commissioner, thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilman. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Kianya Sanchez.
Thank you, good afternoon. I too kind of want to echo, I think LNI is the most proactive it's been in a very long time, and I appreciate Commissioner Perry coming in and hitting the ground running. That said, I just, you know, I know we talked a little bit around the diversity plan, you know, all departments are required to do a language access plan, so I look forward to working with the Commissioner on that, but just want to bring to his attention that, you know, since 2005, the department's hired twenty-nine employees, only one of them has been bilingual, so it is my expectation that in the next hiring freeze, in light of the fact that some of the jobs are technical in nature, that we have a plan for that, but I trust that you will put that together. Wanted to talk a little bit about Eclipse, and one of the things that came out of the discussions when we were rolling it out was the issue of having rolling enrollment, you know, so we have different licenses that expire just one month, you know, March being vendors or whatever. Have we figured out how with Eclipse, we're going to get those to be rolling? So if I'm a vendor and I get a license in February, in March, I got to get a new one? You know, that kind of stuff. Have we looking a little bit at that?
Good afternoon, Councilwoman Sanchez. My name's Kirk McLaren, Administrative Services Director. We are working on that issue, and in terms of the expiration dates of licenses specifically with the rollout of Phases 1A and 1B, which were business license renewals and new business licenses, we have implemented an expiration date specific to the individual. In other words, one year from obtaining that license, as opposed to exactly, like you said, if somebody comes in in January and they have a, you know, a housing inspection license, and then it expires the next month, they have to pay again. We have implemented that, yes.
Okay, that's good. So for most licenses, that's the case, or it will be the case?
It will be, I'm fairly certain it will be the case for all licenses, but I could double-check that just to make sure.
One of the areas of concern, you know, again, I think it's hugely important, and I think it's a testament to Mayor Kenny's commitment to continue to support LNI and kind of its return to being a public safety, is the continuation of the Oversight Committee, and I think one of the reasons that's happening is, again, I think there's a lot of faith being placed on Commissioner Perry to kind of work through the implementation of a lot of new regs and rules, and so I really appreciate it in public, and want to thank the mayor for that. I think anytime you get more eyes on what's going on, we develop a better product. Around the vacant property strategy, I know, you know, we've driven Rebecca crazy with all of the new things around the vacant properties, particularly the commercial structure piece, the industrial ones, which was Councilman O'Brien's issue. Is there anything other than that work that we're doing proactively? Is there any discussion around creating a plan around non-compliance areas, you know, on the business compliance? I think that, just like everything else, there's certain areas where certain behaviors, whether you're talking about South Philly's double parking or whatever, there's certain code violations that have been allowed to kind of permeate in certain areas. What's been the discussion so far about how do we get proactive around some of those quality-of-life issues?
The department wants to make a strong commitment to quality-of-life issues. I think when it comes to violations, different commercial corridors have different issues. And we need, instead of just treating the entire city the same, we need to work with the groups that are within certain business corridors, find out what their main concerns are, and target our enforcement around what those particular issues are. I think we would get much better traction that way, we'd be able to focus our resources in a much more leveraged fashion if we can work with corridor managers, if we can work with business associations, and we can find out what it is that they need to be enforced in their particular area. When we try to do everything for everybody everywhere, we end up doing nothing for anyone anywhere. So I really am confident we're working on actually educational materials to give out, and we look forward to working with Commerce and the various commercial districts to get very specific enforcement programs that work for that corridor.
Yeah, I think that's hugely important, because there is a culture to each corridor, and some things are more important to some corridors than others, so you're right, you know, how we get folks into compliance, that's hugely important. In addition to, you know, we talk about the IDed properties, and I know that you've put in a nine-million-dollar budget on that. In addition to, and there'll be more properties that are IDed, in addition to the demolition piece, which folks have identified for quality of life, what is an area that you think requires more proactive attention?
Yeah, one area that I'm actually concerned about is that, so far this year, we had three collapses of occupied buildings, and those buildings were not on our radar. I think we need to do an outreach effort, an educational effort with various communities to get them to know when to call LNI for a serious structural condition. Properties that are vacant, we have, Rebecca's working on this vacant property strategy, but when we're having occupied buildings that are collapsing, that aren't in our system and haven't been watched, that's really disturbing to me. And I think an educational piece will certainly help with helping folks identify what different gaps and cracks and movement means in their properties, and they can call us and get an inspection done.
As you staff up, will you be able to, and you go to seven offices, will you be able to give us a geography of what different offices, the criteria for selecting, some of the geography around the assignments? I think one of the things moving forward as Eclipse rolls out and others, I really want to follow the baseline data of how many people we have to staff per area, and how proactive that allows us to be. And so, you know, so I know you're juggling around, and you're going to set up these two new offices, I think once you guys get that together, it'd be important to share with us?
Yeah, we'd be happy to share that with you and show you what our logic and thinking is in terms of creating the geographic areas for the various inspection districts.
Because I imagine that's going to move around a lot with two new offices, that's significant.
There'll be major realignment of the district boundaries by trying to squeeze in two additional offices and try to concentrate on the areas that are having the high volumes of construction activity.
Okay, and so there'll be a criteria, we'll be able to clearly see kind of the criteria by which you establish the geographies and stuff?
Yeah, exactly. For instance, if areas that have high-rise buildings, we're going to want to concentrate more inspectors in those areas. So, those high-rise building construction generates a lot more inspection, so even though it's only one parcel or one building, we need to have a lot of resources to handle that type of construction activity, whereas if an area has only single-family construction, then we can probably allow that area to be a little larger than other areas. So, but we'll be happy to share.
Yeah, and I'll just emphasize again that the Yeah, and I'll just emphasize again that the importance of the language, you know, and a lot of immigrant communities, just having that capability and understanding that is going to be hugely important to getting people to comply. So from the concourse, to the folks out in the field, you know, trying to match that up, I think it's going to be hugely important.
Yeah, I mean, along those lines, as we hire these new inspectors, we're going to use selective factor certification, so that we can hire folks directly to have the different skills that we're lacking. I think that'll be real powerful for us, and allow us to fill the various needs that are out there. In addition, with the Eclipse system, we're insisting that the, that we are given the tools to basically put the entire system into multiple languages, so that everybody and anyone can interact with the online system in their own native language.
Good. Thank you, Commissioner. Thank you, Mr. Perry.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Parker.
Let me just say sort of welcome back to the future. From staff to legislator, now councilperson, in streets and both LNI, whenever I've called you've always been responsive, and I just wanted to say thank you for the record.
Thank you.
Sure, probably one of the things that I've appreciated the most is that sometimes when we get recommendations, or problems and challenges are identified at the grassroots level, they're not always viewed as significant sometimes from leadership, and that's never been the case from your perspective. And with that in mind, my first question actually comes from a recent RCO meeting I had with all of the Ninth District RCOs, and they were talking about citations, and that for many issues, citations cannot be written unless the violation is like witnessed by an inspector. And so when they talked about the times that the inspectors worked, sort of during normal business hours, some of the violations obviously are occurring outside of a normal business hour. So, again, very simple question, but one that could be of great assistance, and that is, is there a way that inspectors' hours can be shifted, so that some of them can occur outside of normal business hours? Or do we already do that, just not to an increased volume?
Yeah, we have different crews that are available on off-hours. We have a regular Saturday patrol that's, that looks for unpermitted construction activity. We have a nuisance task force that does inspections of nightclubs and other establishments over the weekend, so we do have a presence on off-hours.
If there is a way that we can just sort of review that, particularly regionally in areas where we may see more activity taking place on sort of abnormal business hours, if we could just review that to see whether there is a need at all to increase that, that would be of great benefit to us, and we can report back to our constituency that, listen, the city's paying close attention to all of the unpermitted activity taking place on or during abnormal business hours, that would be great.
Okay, we will certainly work with you on that. Are there specific areas that you want to report to us?
We will, and we-
Get those, get it in.
We'll make sure that we forward those to you ASAP. The next question is in regards to the issue of enforcement of provisos. And so, explain to me, how does LNI enforce provisos adopted by the zoning board on variances and special exceptions that have been granted? Because what we've heard from both the community and LNI is that it is pretty difficult, and very challenging, to enforce provisos. Are there any powers, authorities, or anything that you need from the legislative side that could help the department be more effective or efficient in that area?
Yeah, enforcing zoning provisos is very difficult, especially those that are not dealing with bricks and mortar. I don't know if there's a legislative solution there, the best solution is to craft a proviso so that it's very clear as to what's needed, and it's something that's easily measurable. If you put a proviso in there that the building owner has to go to community meetings once a month, or, you know, something along those lines that we can't routinely monitor, then you can't really expect us to be involved in the enforcement process. But if it's the kind of thing where, you know, they need to have folks assisting in parking of cars, or there's some certain physical construction that needs to take place as a proviso, that is enforceable. So it really, it boils down to the strength of the proviso, and the ability for us to be able to quantify exactly what's being asked.
So having the ability to quantifiably measure whether or not the group is sort of meeting all of the regs included in the proviso is extremely important. With that in mind, I'm a huge fan of sort of like establishing rubrics. So is there a way that we can work together, you all can sort of just do internally, develop a rubric for measurable and unmeasurable? Because some RCOs, we have to remember, these are community-based organizations, right? They're trying to do what is in the best interest of their neighborhood, so when they're working in an effort to trying to craft a proviso, they're doing what they think will be helpful. Can you all help to develop a sort of a guide to the establishing of provisos that would be a sort of a rubric for groups to follow?
Yeah, that sounds like a very good idea. I think we'll meet with the zoning board, and with the planning commission, and see what we can do to come up with some standardized type provisos that we know we can enforce, and that if a community group puts that in as a requirement, that they have confidence that something will be taken, some action will be taken if it's not followed.
Thank you. And then finally, just to follow up to Councilman Johnson and Councilwoman Keanu Sanchez's comments in regards to the establishment of the new offices. When in fact, you have worked on establishing the criteria, if there is anything that we can do, plug, plug, to be helpful in helping you identify locations, feel free to call us, we want to be helpful.
Will do.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. I better get my bid in for my office in the Fifth Councilmatic District, they'll all be used up by the time I get it out of my mouth. Just a reminder, we have a neighborhood budget hearing at 6:00 this evening, and it is about a half an hour travel time from City Hall, just a reminder. And we do have a department left. Chair recognizes Councilman Heenan.
Mr. President, just a quick questions to wrap it up on my end, and a lot of, you know, just to add and echo the interest on the process, and how things are set up with the GMA's and the new district offices. Would love to, you know, I'm just going to ask you for the record, maybe you can provide them for the chair. How many, how many district offices do you currently have, and do all the inspectors report there in the morning?
Yeah, they're required to, yes.
They're required to, and how are the cases assigned?
Well, if you're talking about building permit inspections-
I know, I understand it's different building permits, and, but how are they assigned generally? Is it in order, priority status, you know, I guess a little dangerous?
Yeah, I mean, what we consider to be the top of the pyramid would be complaints and reports of dangerous buildings. They would get an immediate response. Other types of complaints that come in, they get handled in turn, they get divided up amongst the different districts. Generally, an inspector has a certain number of census tracts within a particular district, and the work would go out to, based upon the census tract in which the complaint came in.
Okay, so I guess the creation of the GMA's or their areas, or, you know, districts, you take into account the travel time, I would imagine, in between cases?
Yeah, I mean, that's part of the analysis that gets done in figuring out where district offices need to be. You want to minimize that travel time, because that's simply wasted effort. So we want to get these offices as close to where the, where the action is occurring. Now, that's not always possible, given what the city can lease, and what city buildings are available out there. In the past, we've had some buildings that are, that are way off from where the actual work occurs, and we need to get away from that, because it doesn't help to spend half of your day traveling from the local office to where you have to perform an inspection.
Exactly. How many staff are centrally located in the plan, conduct, planning reviews?
Well, can you ask that question again?
How many staff are centrally located in the conduct plan reviews? In your department, for plan review?
For plan review. There's approximately 30 plan reviewers in the MSB concourse.
Now, are there plans for additional staff, once you move towards the electronic plan review?
There are no plans to increase the plan examiners at this point.
Is there an anticipated drop in wait time, in conjunction of the plan review system is currently in place, when you shift to electronic? So the wait time will be shorter?
Yeah, I would think that we can gain some efficiencies through electronic plan review, because what will happen is that we can have, in a lot of cases, to get a building permit or a zoning permit, there's prerequisite requirements from other city agencies. So by getting the plans submitted electronically, those plans can be simultaneously distributed to everyone that needs to review this set of plans. So we'll get away from the situation where an architect or a builder has to go from city office to city office to get their approvals. So the overall response time, the overall approval time, to go from when you start your permitting process to when it's completed, should be reduced.
Great. And last, when you take a look at best practice, and, you know, taking a look at where we line up with other cities comparable to the city of Philadelphia, and our fees, and, you know, the possible move to, you know, adjusting them, I suggest taking a look at the maximum permit fee. All right, and I don't know if that's preempted again by the state UCC or not, but I don't know what the max is, 7,500 maybe, or 5,000?
That I'd have to, you talking about electrical permits, or permits in general?
Well, okay, well, I'll speak to electrical permits then.
Yeah, I-
But there is a max fee, I think it's like 7,500.
I believe there is a maximum fee.
Is that right? Do you know, for electrical? Do you know what the building permit max fee is? Can I? All right, well, in any case, you have maximum fees that are relatively, you know, inexpensive when you consider, you know, doing sizable projects, like the Convention Center, the Comcast Building, or, you know, some of these commercial residential, you know, properties, and you only have a maximum fee of 5,000 or 7,000. Higher, I don't know, with some of the other building permits, but I would, you know, recommend that you take a, take a look at that, and reconsider, you know, adjusting the maximum for building permits.
Okay, that's a good suggestion, we will look at that.
You got it, thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Chair recognizes Councilman Don.
Just a few more quick questions. I want to follow up to Councilman Heenan's comments and my prior comments about the revenue and the fees. There was 54 million of revenue from LNI last year?
Correct.
And my information says that there was 40,000 building, electrical, and plumbing permits in the department in 2015. Does that sound right?
That's approximately correct, yes.
So on simple math, if each one was like $130, that would generate 54 million?
I can't do that math in my head any longer, Councilman. I'll trust you.
But I guess what I'm, I guess what we're saying is that the volume of permits, adjusting those fees, is a lot of money, ton of money. So we really need to look at that, because a $50 adjustment sounds like it's $20 million.
Chair recognizes Councilwoman Sanchez.
I just want to advocate for the department. I think that that money goes to the general fund, and I think the department should be allowed to get incentives for around some of this stuff, so-
It's going to go to the department?
Uh-huh.
Should go to the department.
Well, I just want you to clarify that. I'm sure that's what you intended to do, and so I just want to clarify that we should provide incentives. Thank you.
Now, my goal is for you to have more tools to run this department more efficiently. I'd like to see those revenues go back into the department, so you can use those tools to make LNI the best it can be. So, whatever you can do, we're talking the same language, just let's figure out the fees, I think they have to be raised, and let's, there's a lot of potential revenue there. One last question. In 2015, you were an LNI commissioner, but do you have any idea of how many unpermitted construction violations occurred?
We're checking now, Councilman.
Okay. I tell you, 40,000's a tremendous amount of permits last year, it's a huge volume going through your department.
Yeah, I mean, the whole key here is how much of the new revenue can actually flow back to the department? Because as it stands, you know, any revenues generated go to the general fund, and, you know, they're distributed amongst different departments that have different needs. But there are other models out there that could help capture the revenue that we need in order to have the department adequately staffed, and have all the resources that are needed for whatever construction enforcement or business compliance programs that the city needs in order to meet the needs of the citizens.
You know, that court case, though, Ron versus Tredifrin Township, does state that any, all costs should go back for the, can't charge more than the cost of what's going on, but they should go back to the department?
Yeah, in my recollection of that court case, you can't charge permit fees higher than what it costs to provide the service.
That's correct.
Now, there are other departments that are involved in permitting, so it's not just LNI's costs that are involved, you also have to consider what the planning commission does, the historical commission does, and the role that the Commerce Department has. So it's not, it's not as simple as just looking at how much money LNI is spending on plan reviews and building inspections, and how much revenue's coming in. There's a lot of other, there's a lot of other agencies that are involved in that process.
While we're waiting for that other question, you can get back to me on that other question. You can get back to me.
FY15, 786.
I have one last question I wanted to ask. You said there were three buildings that collapsed this year. Were those three buildings delinquent in real estate taxes?
Yes, they all were.
Because in New York City, put a system in place about 12 years ago, that had 12 different probabilities, delinquent taxes was one of them, lack of a facade inspection was another, but when they merged all the information, they found out that all the buildings that were collapsing had these 12 characteristics going on. So it might be something we could look at, because it might help us preventing issues down the road.
Yeah, that's exactly the type of analysis that Rebecca Swanson does in looking at our vacant property survey, and we need to expand that beyond just vacant properties, because like we were discussing earlier, we're having issues with occupied properties beyond that. You have situations that we're finding in which the primary owner of the property dies, and the family takes over, they stop paying real estate taxes, they stop maintaining the property, and water is allowed to infiltrate, especially through the roof system, and eventually that's going to cause major structural issues.
Okay, thank you very much, thanks for testimony.
Sure.
Thank you, Councilman. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Blackwell.
Thank you very much. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
I have so many things going, I dare not ask for something else, but so many community issues, but I will ask you- But I will ask you, Commissioner, if you'll look at the bill we introduced dealing with the water main break and the contractors who helped fix it, and see if you may have some suggestions for us. We're having a hard time working that out. So we've been talking to folks in the city, but we're not straight yet. So maybe I'll ask you to look at that bill for what we can do when there's a city emergency.
So which specific, well, we can talk offline on that, Councilwoman. I'll give you a call.
Yes, yes.
So I can get some more details on it?
Yeah, we'll send you the bill. We introduced it about, in January. So obviously, I don't have it straight, or we would have followed up. So we've been trying to find out a way to do something. We've been met with the fire commissioner and his team. We met with different adjusters. We met with so many people, but we don't have it right. I understand the license we talked about may not even be within our authority. That's to deal with the state, too. So I would just like to, we'll send it to you.
Okay, I'll be happy to take a look at it for you.
Thanks. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilwoman. That appears to conclude the questions for the witness. And with that, I want to thank you very much for your testimony and your responses.
Thank you.
Thank you.